Because there's a Midwest communication. So they gave cap. Because of what happens, you know, in the middle of the week. So it's like this many take off. Last year, Tuesday, yeah, this many take off. South End, South Harbor, South Market. They're 43 stations. So that way. Didn't have this huge.
We'll pick Thursday, Friday.
Yeah.
I wonder how they determine who gets to make sure.
I don't know.
It's funny.
I think some of the other term advertisers will be surprised because she's a lot. She just rolls over. She doesn't have any contract with her. She just let it go.
I think when it falls on Thursday. They did this a couple of years ago. When it falls on a Thursday, we get Thursday and Friday off.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if they'll do that next year.
Well, she's been on board for a short time. She was doing this for a while. So a lot of people are off. She was just appalled the fact that we go out and actually say, let's talk about renewing. Let's get things ready to.
That would be nice.
Well, I think that there's always a severe downturn in attendance. A lot of requests for days off. Speaking of which, I need to have a seat. Speaking of which, we got another month, but I just want to do some more copy with you or something. Let me do something different.
You guys ready?
Correct, change it up and get it.
Call to order the July 5th Planning and Zoning Commission. Roll call, please.
Katharina Barbie.
Here.
Vicky Buckley.
Here.
David Castro.
Yes, here.
Deborah Neer.
Yes, here.
Jerry Wright.
Here.
Chair Christina Doe.
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
Yeah. He didn't catch it.
I did.
Approval of the agenda for tonight. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? And if none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Buckley.
Second.
Second by Barbie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Approval of the June 20th, 2018 minutes. Any additions, deletions, corrections? And if none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Neer.
Second.
Second by Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to speak on anything that is not part of the agenda, you're welcome to go to the podium. And we have no one, so we will move on to our new business. We have a public hearing, a petition by Brad Coppins, applicant, and Brian Shali and Sheila Prallad, owners, for approval of a special use permit for a video gaming establishment in the G.C., General Commercial District, for property located at 850 to 852 South Fourth Street. And I open the floor to the petitioners. If you'd state your name and address.
My name's Brad Coppins. I live at 13 Meadow Trail West in the beautiful city of DeKalb.
And do you have a presentation this evening?
Indeed, I do.
Or you can go ahead and go on?
Okay. Brian and I have talked about this for a long time. We never acted on it until this last year. But, south side of DeKalb has too many empty buildings. And, video gaming is something that will go in, that will be, shouldn't have any issues with crime, or patrons that will cause a ruckus. It's not a bar. It's going to be a video gaming cafe. I actually asked my, the guy who's working with me to provide the slot machines, I said, "Who is the typical customer that attends one of these video gaming cafes?" And he said, "It is usually a female, and they're usually over the age of 50." So, my clientele will most likely be grandmothers. And usually, they don't cause a lot of trouble. So, we don't expect any, and we're looking forward to opening a business on the south side. I do have four major points that I will be going through on the presentation. One is that, I already went over it. It will fill an empty commercial property that has been, has experienced some prolonged vacancy in the last number of years. I will employ local citizens, preferably southsiders. Maisys will provide tax revenue to the city of DeKalb, and fees. And both myself, and Brian Shali, and Sheila Prallad, the owners of the building, are all DeKalb residents. So, if he owns the building, I own the business, and all DeKalb residents are working it, all that money stays here in the city. Here we have a layout of the subject site, which is Brian's building. His part is the top, the darker part, and then the lighter shade is where my business would be, and it'd be on the south side. Currently, in the middle of the building, Brian has a woman who does some hair in there, and he also has some massage therapy rooms that I think it's a prenatal woman that does massage therapy there, so. Here's a picture of the front of the building. We will be on the right side. There will be, there will be three different units now. They'll be labeled 850, 852, and 854, South Fourth Street. Brian's building is on the left there, as you can see. And then the middle building would be the entrance to the back, and then mine would be on the right. This is a layout of the parking. We don't expect, there's only five machines that you can have. That's mandated by the state. So, parking will never be an issue because, and I've also gone to a lot of these other places and done research on it, and these aren't like people, five people sitting there playing the machines, and then five people, or 10 people waiting to play them. If they walk in, they see that a machine's busy, or their favorite machine, they just go somewhere else. So, there won't be a need for a ton of parking because we won't have that many customers at once. Here's a layout of, this is not exactly how it's going to be, but here's a rough layout of what we were looking at. It's actually a very large building, more than room than I need. But, we'll have two bathrooms. There'll be some sinks, and then we'll have the machines with a bar, where we'll serve beer and wine, and then give away free pop, water, things like that. The compliance, Maisys will comply with all the provisions of the applicable district regulations. Maisys will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, or the public welfare of the community. Maisys' special use will not affect the outside building, or the land on the near property, or, on the land, or the land on or near the property of 850, 854, South Fourth Street. A fenced-in area will be placed around the garbage dumpster. I will obviously put a sign up, a Maisys sign, to let people know that we're in business. And, that's all the work that'll be done on the building. There's not going to be any other parking lot that is very nice. We don't need to do anything with that. It's turnkey. It's ready to go. Maisys will, has, or will have adequate utility, drainage, and comply with all city requests to be in compliance. One point I do want to make is, currently on the south side of DeKalb, there are no video gaming parlors. There is The Legion, which is a private nonprofit, and then there's a bar, Twins. And, in my opinion, and why I like Brian's location so much, is grandmothers don't like to go into a bar to play their video gaming machines. They want to be left in peace, to play their machines in quiet, and they don't really want their neighbors watching them do it. Which is why my place will be very nice for them. They can come in, they can be at peace, they won't be bothered by anybody else. They'll be alongside people that are wanting to do the same thing. We are, we are going to block, Brian was bringing up the, we're going to block off the windows, so you cannot see in. And that's what all the other places do. So, walking by, people know what it is, kids know what it is, but they're not going to be, no one under 21 is allowed, because we serve alcohol. And, no one can see in, too. So, the customers have their privacy. And I already went through that. Here's the hours of operation. They're actually, it's Monday through Wednesday is actually 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. It's not 2:00. Thursday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. These are the liquor laws based on the city of DeKalb. So, and my plan is, is, some of the other places in town, if I find that we open at 7:00, and no one comes in till 9:00 for like four weeks straight, well, we're going to start opening at 9:00. If we're open till 2:00 a.m. on Saturday morning, or Sunday morning, Saturday night, and no one is coming in after midnight, and that's a habit, we see that, it's not happening, then we're not going to stay open that late. And other places in the area have done the same thing. They've shrunk their hours because they saw what kind of business they were getting, and they moved their hours to save on labor costs, and go from there. Employees, we're open 19 hours a day, for a couple days of the week, so we need a lot of employees. I have intentionally not put ads in the paper, looking for people. I have placed a sign in Brian's window in front, looking for southsiders. And I've been successful at that. I've had several people call me, interested in jobs, because I want southsiders working it. Makes it easy for them to get there, and it makes it easy for me to say, "Well, you couldn't get here because why? Your car was broke? Well, you live down the street, you know, so, come on." The second point there is going through the capacity of the facility, and that's never going to be in question, because it's, we're not going to have more than five, six, seven people in the place at once. And, I've gone through, done spot checks on a lot of other facilities around the state, and I've very rarely seen the five machines full, with people playing them. And if there are, there's no one waiting, because there's another one across the street or down the street that they've already been to. So, they're just going to go to the next one. They're not going to wait. These are notes taken right out of the City Council goal directive, and there's a lot of them, and these five apply to me. We would be filling an empty commercial property on South Fourth Street. Oh, I'm sorry, here we go. We're, the City Council, they're focusing on areas outside of downtown. They're trying to increase efforts to draw businesses to East and West Lincoln Highway and South Fourth Street. Increase business activity on South Fourth Street and East Lincoln Highway. Reduce commercial vacancies by 25%. And use vacant retail stores for pop-ups, retail space for pop-up stores. And this is taken word for word from the DeKalb City Council goals. Permits, all permits have, have been, or will be applied for, including building, fire safety, county health, and signage. Alcohol training, I have completed alcohol training, and all employees will have to complete alcohol training before, within 120 days of their first date of employment. So, everyone will be required to know how much they can serve, when they can serve, when to not serve, and when to turn people away. And, I honestly don't think, people don't go there to drink, and talk, and have a good time with their friends. They go there to play the machines. They might have a couple drinks, but I don't see, foresee anybody becoming overly intoxicated, or having any issues with patrons there. The positive impact for DeKalb is, filling an empty commercial property on South Fourth Street, employing the local citizens, as I've said. The revenue to the city of DeKalb, which is $4,000 a year in fees, it's about $2,500 for the liquor license, and then the gaming license is actually $250 per machine, per year, which is about $4,000 in fees that the city will take in. And that doesn't include the profit sharing. The city takes, it gets 10% of the take. Which I estimate that to be $20,000 a month, or a year. And these are public numbers, so you can go on, you know, you can Google it, you can look these up, it's real easy, and you can see exactly what the city's getting from these other places in town. So, I had a good reference point to go back and look, and estimate what I think that the place will do. And I'll also bring up again that, that all the money stays here in DeKalb. I live in DeKalb, Brian and Sheila live in DeKalb, and all the residents will live in DeKalb. Or all the employees, sorry. Here's a mock-up that Banner Up was kind enough to do for me, for the sign. Very simple. Nothing fancy. No flashing lights, no strobe lights, no sirens. Just a night, it'll be a lighted sign, but nice and classy. Just very similar to a lot of the other ones that are in town.
Okay. You can go ahead and have a seat if you're done, and if we have any questions, we'll have you come back up. Thank you. Brian, I know you put a speaker sheet here, but since you're part of the ownership, do you have anything you'd like to state, as far as the petition? No, it's okay.
Okay. My name is Brian Shali. My residence is 455 Quinlan, which is in Rivermist. I've been here in DeKalb since 1977, when I started school at Northern Illinois University. And, my first job out of school was my State Farm agency in 1982, January. So, I've been a State Farm agent here in town over 36 years. I've owned the building for approximately 31 years. I started my initial office down on the south side, renting a bedroom from Dewitt Osgood and his real estate agency, which is right next to Twin Taps, just to the north. And, then I moved out to where B's Rock and Roll is, and I moved out to Anderson Drywall for a while. And then Dave Jefellers bought the building for his sister-in-law, who's running All Seasons Florist, and asked if he put on an addition, would I be willing to rent it for my agency? I said, "Absolutely." And, after the building addition was on, six months later, he said, "You want to buy the building?" I said, "Absolutely." So, I ran down, talked to Tim Struthers, and I got a loan from him, and Dave Jefellers gave me a loan for the Downstroke, which I paid off in about three, four years. And then I added on another addition to that building, and I extended it out. So, I have approximately 920 square feet for my State Farm agency, and the main building is about 2,400 square feet. All Seasons Florist stayed there for about the first 20 years that I owned it. Went through two owners. It was Theresa Rissman, and then Mary Rehack owned it. And, she ended up going out of business. And, at that time, it was vacant, that whole building was vacant for about a year. And, then after that, Amanda, who is now McGinnis, but Amanda Aldis came in, and she built Amanda's spa. She built a salon area on half of the building, where Maisys will be going. And then she built five salon, or spa spaces, in the north half of the building, that butts up to my building. And, in that, there's four massage rooms, what they, they call massage rooms, they're small spaces, they're about 150, 160 square feet spaces. And then there's a little bit bigger space, about 200 square feet, that has window space. And, in there, she had the nail salon, where she had pedicure chairs and nails, and so she had water in that room. So, what I've just done, and what just got final inspected today, is I divided the building in half, because I was having trouble renting it as an entire building. So, I was at kind of wits end, what to do. So, I divided the building in half, and I put in a new doorway, to the, to the north of the windows. If I could get a slide up here, I could kind of point at where it is. But anyhow, I put a new doorway in, and that took up one of the massage rooms, which is now a reception room. Then there's three massage rooms. I have two of them rented. And then there's the spa room, that I call it, that's been rented since January. One of the massage rooms had been rented since about March, and then, May, a third person came in, and now we're having somebody look at the other massage room. And actually, the tenant in the spa room wants to leave, so we're trying to find somebody to sublet that person. I'm making it very affordable for these people. The spa rooms, or the massage rooms, are going for $350, utilities included. So, it allows an individual entrepreneur, or somebody straight out of hair school, could come in, put a chair in. I've got a washing bowl now, in the new section, with the, with the new handicap bathroom. Outside the bathroom, I put in a washing bowl that could be common, in case I do have hairdressers come in, and they're not renting the bigger room, which is $600. So, I have three rooms at 350, that one room at 600. And then I have, now I have a separate room for Maisys. So, in essence, I have five individual businesses that could be housed in that building. And the benefit to me is, is that if I lose a tenant, I don't lose the whole thing. I'm not vacant for a year, like I have been twice. And, you know, I still have to pay my $10,000 a year in property taxes, and I still have to pay my mortgage, and things like that. So, since I owned the building, I put a $40,000 facade on it. I took down, we had some old shingles, took it down, and drive it up, which is what it looks like right now. Part of that was paid for, half of it was paid for with TIF funds, because I am the last remaining building on, in the TIF district. And, two years ago, I put in a $25,000 brand-new parking lot, stripped it down three inches, put in gravel, and put in a brand-new parking lot. So, that's good for another, the building is built 1960, and had the original parking lot in it, so you tell me how long that is. I can't do the math right off the bat. So, for me, my idea is that now I have several players that I could kind of put in and plug in, and I'm keeping at least part of the building rented it all the time. And, and that's helpful for me to pay my bills down there. For the south side of DeKalb, as I spoke, when I, when I spoke with City Council, there's a lot of established business on the south side of DeKalb. If you look at it, there's Twin Taps, there's South Town, there's a lot of car repair places. All of us have been down there for 30 years. There's really only a couple vacancy, vacant buildings that are down there. One is the Pro-Tannels Place, and that has to be remediated. And the other one is the Kentucky Fried Chicken. And then there's mine, that comes up like every 10 years. I gotta find a new tenant after a year. And, what I like about the idea of having Brad with a video gaming, is he signed a five-year contract with me. And, I assume, and the way I've been seeing the history of all the other video gaming in DeKalb and Sycamore, they're long-term residents. They're, they're going to be there for the long term. And I think down the road, I'm 10, 15 years out from retiring, Brad is younger than me, and, and he's got family, I think, that might be involved in his business, maybe sell him the whole building, and he could keep it going. So, it's just, it's, we're trying to get long-term people down on the south side of DeKalb, and we do need an influx of some new business. And, and this, to me, is a perfect opportunity to create some traffic, and, and to, again, to, to show what other businesses are on the south side of DeKalb. So, that's, that's the point of it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to open the public hearing to, no, I'm sorry. City first.
Yeah, thank you. You have a staff report in your packet, kind of going through the background of the request, as the applicant had noted. General Commercial Zoning, the video gaming establishment is a use we created a couple years ago, or less than two years ago. If some of the commissioners may recall, with the text amendment. That means a video gaming operation that is the primary use in the operate, not the accessory use. So, we created a definition in the UDO at that time, and that is what is being requested at that location. A little history, in early 2017, the council approved some ordinances regulating video gaming establishments, creating that use. There's a text amendment, amendment to the liquor code. That was on the back part of a six-month moratorium that was enacted in 2016. The council passed, due to the high volume of these video gaming operations in the city, the standalone ones. In addition to the amendments to the UDO, of course, we created the definition, we had a separation requirement between these, of 500 feet. Again, these are the standalone ones, not the accessory ones. Council also revised Chapter 38, that's the liquor code, in order to limit the number of new standalone video gaming establishments to the number that existed at that time of adoption, which was seven. Per state law, these video gaming operations must serve liquor in those. So, this, the liquor code was amended to cap the number of these video gaming establishments where they're the primary use, not accessory. In addition to those text amendments, we also added the video gaming establishment as special use in the light commercial and the general commercial districts. So, that's where we put them in the UDO. So, through the rest of 2017, early 2018, the city did field some requests from several entities interested in establishing video gaming establishments, which we had a cap of seven. Earlier this year in March, the council discussed that matter, in terms of opening that up for more, and amended the liquor code to increase the number of supplemental licenses for video gaming establishments for three locations. One of those is a subject property being discussed tonight. The applicant did submit the special use in the liquor license application, and the video gaming license in the required time. That ordinance, it was approved in March. On June 11th, the council approved an ordinance authorizing a bar liquor license with the supplementary license for the video gaming terminals, for this subject location, subject to several conditions. One of those was that the applicant must obtain all zoning approvals, including the special use permit, which they did submit, and we set a hearing for this evening. So, proof of the ordinance, that ordinance by the council did not, does not automatically grant the special use. They still have to go through that. Prove that they meet the standards for special use in the UDO, and get a recommendation from the commission, and go to the council. So, they still need to do that. That ordinance does not grant that approval. We did receive one written citizen's response, on the citizen response form, from Sherri Blondell, 917 South Fifth Street, indicating she does not support the proposal. That was part of your packet, made part of the record. So, the recommendation is tonight. I understand we do have a speaker request for somebody in opposition to the proposal. So, we wanted to hear that feedback, and then other questions and comments from the commission. And, once we have all that, we're recommending to the commission that we continue the hearing to the August 8th meeting. And there's a sample motion in your packet at the end of the staff report. On July 18th, our next meeting, we do have a couple hearings that night, so we didn't want to continue it to that. Respect for that timeframe for the 18th, so we're recommending it for August 8th. If there's any questions, certainly, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. So, I do open up the public hearing now, and we have a request from Nancy Taboda. If you want to go to the podium and state, I just stated your name, but, your name and address, please.
As you said, my name is Nancy Taboda. I reside at 130 Cobblestone Trail, here in DeKalb. But I'm here representing Children's Learning Center, which is at 905 South Fourth Street, directly across the street from the proposed site of this facility. I am all about, you know, just first, let me say, I'm all about improving businesses, and putting businesses in where there are empty buildings, because that KFC building has been empty for a really, really long time, and it is a problem. And, however, I represent, between the Growing Place, which is also a preschool program, directly next door to Children's Learning Center, between the two programs, we have on a daily basis, year-round, Monday through Friday, 300 families, who are in and around our buildings, dropping off children, picking their children up. And, we both operate from 6:30 in the morning until 5:30 in the afternoon. And, in addition to that, I'm also representing over 100 teachers and support staff, who work in the two, in the two programs. As early childhood preschool programs, we are, contrary to what some people may think, we are schools. And, both programs provide during the school year, before and after-school care for the children who attend DeKalb schools, one of which is Founders. And, our after, before and after-school programs for the schoolchildren at Founders is housed at our 905 South Fourth Street location. And, the Growing Place, they have their before and after-school program in Founders Elementary, which is directly behind the proposed location. And, there are, there's a lot of foot traffic of school-aged children in and around that area, on Culver Street, on Fourth Street, and during business hours, so from 6:30 in the morning until 5:30 in the afternoon. In addition to that... In addition to that, and I can't speak directly to what the school district does, but I do know, having had children that went to the school when it was Huntley, and now it's Founders, that there are a lot of alternative after-school activities that take place outdoors on the playground, right there behind the proposed site. We do have concern about exposure, and I hear what you're saying as far as, you know, 50 and older women, grandmas, as you said, being the people who would most likely be the people who would go to this establishment. I'm in that category, and I would not be going into that location. I know that there are probably other demographics of people that would be going into the business, and, you know, it's good to hear that there's only five machines that are going to be in there, because I think that may alleviate some fears that people might have. So, thank you for that information. But I think anytime you hear of gambling, I feel that anytime I hear of gambling, whether it be at Twins or at the place down the road, there is automatically some concern that comes to my mind, that people may get, you know, if they get really, they win big, they may get really excited, and who knows what's gonna happen. But if they lose big, that's also something that is a concern, because I've seen those reactions from people. And during the hours that they're going to be operating, I just have, I know that I have a lot of concern about that. So, there's safety of concern of the children and the families across the street during year-round. And then there's also concern for the safety of the children and families during the school year that attend Founders Elementary. Some of the comments that I was asked to present, and again, I know that I am representing, I'm not all these voices, but there is concern that so often, people think of Children's Learning Center and the Growing Place as daycare programs. And we don't take care of days, we take care of children. And we are preschool programs, we have educational curriculum, we have teacher-qualified teachers. So, we are an educational school. We are a school facility. And so, I think that has to be taken into consideration when the decision is, is made. And so, I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other speaker request forms, and I'll note that there's only three people here, so one being the public and two being those presenting. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open to the commissioners for any questions at the moment, or comments. Vicki, start with you.
I think the only comment I have is, my radio station is directly next door to one, to Suzie's, and we're a small, tiny, little parking lot. We have five spaces, they have about three, and the lot's never full. Is that the type of thing that you're anticipating, where you're gonna have very few people?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I have a question for you. You were talking and granted, we don't-
Can I, yeah, can I have you go to the podium?
Sorry.
Please, that's great.
I'm sorry. And though we don't deal with the financial side of things here, you had mentioned the revenue generated for the year being 20,000, or was that the portion that the city would get?
That's the city's take.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify that, because I'm thinking, how are you gonna run a business at 20 grand?
Poorly.
I looked at that and went, how's that, how's that gonna work?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's all I have.
And that's public information, you can Google it and it's-
Yeah, yeah. I was just kind of curious about it. I didn't hear it correctly, so I was like, I wanna clarify for my own benefit. That's all I have.
Okay. Jerry?
You, what, what number of employees did you?
Eight.
Eight?
I'm gonna work it to start off with.
And what, what type of positions are in the video gaming business?
Not to be funny, but the position is for the person to stay out of the people's way playing the machines.
Okay.
Offer them drinks every once in a while and stay out of their way.
All right. You call this a video cafe, right? No coffee or anything, right?
Oh, yeah, coffee, yeah. Everything's free except for the alcohol. I can't give away alcohol, or else they'd lock me up.
Is there food there, too?
Very minimal, bags of chips. I'm not preparing any food, maybe a popcorn machine, but there's not gonna be any ovens or anything like that, no.
Okay. Is, what's the significance of the name Macy?
It's, a friend of mine fell on hard times, and she let me, she asked me to take care of her cat, and her name was Maisy. And all the other places are named after women, so I thought, that's a great idea, name it after her cat. And the cat, the cat is also a City of DeKalb resident.
All right. Your anticipated earnings, do you anticipate having projected earnings for it?
No, I honestly have not done that. I've been too busy to, it, I've crunched the numbers on all the other places in town, and it can be profitable. It's very, the labor cost, especially with me working it, I'm looking at a $2,500 labor cost, 1,500 for rent, 1,000 for extras, so 5,000 would be my break-even point, and all these places, Twins sometimes does more than that. And they have three machines. But there is a cap on, you can't, it's impossible for the places to make more than a certain amount, because there's only so many hours in a day. It's only a $2 minimum bet on the machines, and there's only five machines. So, it's not, there's not, there's no, there is a ceiling on profitability. You can't make millions, it's impossible. It's intended to be, the video gaming is intended to be, the state wanted it to be family-run businesses. And some of them are here in town. It's, the families own them, like a mom and sister owns, or a mom and daughter own one, and they're very successful.
Question for the city. How many feet away or between the proposed video gaming facility and the preschool? Do we know?
What is the distance? I don't know offhand.
Any applicable liquor laws that would, regarding proximity to preschool?
There's a state liquor-
Where liquor is served?
State liquor code is 100 feet to a school.
100 feet?
100 feet to a school, which, and they're 120 feet from Founders Elementary School property line. Now, that's just a school, not a preschool, daycare is not included in that. It's a school, private or public school.
Okay, so there is, there's no regulations regarding a privately-run?
It'd be a private school, like a full school, kindergarten through-
But not a preschool?
Not a preschool. That's state law. There's no local law on video gaming separation to a school. There's only a separation to another video gaming establishment of 500 feet.
Okay.
But they all have to serve liquor per state laws, so the liquor codes would apply to that, so.
Right. Okay. So, how far is Twins then from your location?
Two blocks.
Because if it says 55, because they have the machines, so they're kind of-
They're an accessory, that's a bar, they're, the video gaming, I guess there's only three machines in there.
Correct.
They're considered an accessory. It's a bar initially, an accessory, the video game is accessory, it's not the primary use there. The bar is the primary use. And then the American Legion's a little further, a couple more blocks down to the south, they're, our state, or our local code allows video gaming in the non-for-profit fraternal organizations, quite a few of them have them there. So, again, that's an accessory use, it's not the primary operation there.
So, how many of those establishments do we have in DeKalb?
Between the, the accessory or the primary, or both?
Both. Both.
Roughly, as of a year or so back, around 20, and there were seven, or it's the primary use that was a cap. And then, as I mentioned recently, there was approval for three more. Two of those, including this one, submitted the applications in the appropriate time, the other did not, so.
Because I, I mean, I, I understand that you want to fill your business, but I'm not so much, so happy about the video gaming part, because we already have Twins there. I, okay, so it's a different category, but still, and my kids went to Founders when it was called Huntley, and, and they walked there, actually, at that time. So, they would've passed there, because I think you get out of, what is that? The little sunset, you cross there with the crossing guard, and then you kind of pass by there. That used to be like it, but now it's an elementary school, so it has a different area, right, where it comes from, where the kids come from. Because the kids went into Lincoln, when middle school was, so I guess that wouldn't be really a problem. I'm, I'm just not, I still have to think about it, but I'm not really, I, I understand your point, Mr. Taboda, very well, so.
Another question.
Go ahead.
So, Dan, technically, the, the city hasn't placed any limitations on the number of establishment, is that correct?
On video gaming establishments, they have.
They have, and what is that?
It's primary use. Well, it was seven, now they've increased it to, you know, by three more, and only two of those three submitted the necessary petitions, applications in time, so.
Okay, so they're, they're, they're within, this application is within?
Yes, they were one that applied and was granted the liquor license contingent upon several conditions, one of those, the special use, yeah.
Okay, I just think that needs to be cleared. Okay.
Well, they still have to approve each special, it has to be approved by special use, so that's the case-by-case review. But they were granted a liquor license conditioned upon several items related to the liquor license. He's gone through several of those now. One of those conditions was, they had to get zoning approval. That doesn't mean, it's granted automatically, they just have to go through the proper procedure.
May I speak to some of the objections that I heard?
Sure. Can I state one thing? I, I have a problem with the hours. Opening at 7:00 AM, and this may not be towards you, it, this might be a comment to the city, that you're serving liquor at 7:00 AM in a, in the morning. I just, why? But anyway, so I have a little problem with the hours. Opening at 7:00 AM, and the fact that you're going to be serving liquor when there's a higher probability of children walking by there, I have a problem with that. I know that, you know, you're not gonna serve from, or be open from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and then close while the kids walk by. I just have a problem with the opening hours. So, that's a piece that I do have a problem with. How are you going to handle, or have you thought how you will handle, if a child does walk into your establishment, just because they don't know what it is, and they might think it's a store, you know, where they can walk in and get a soda, or get candy or whatever on the way home, how are you gonna handle that?
Tell them that you must be 21 then, or?
Okay. And if you have, well, obviously, if you have any issues, you'll handle that as well, but as you're training your staff, just something to keep in mind, I would hope, you know, to have that conversation, that you may be dealing with young children that are curious, or they don't know what it is. So, just my comment. Okay, so you wanted to, to touch a little bit on some things we're saying.
Yes. I understand your objections, and I thank you for bringing them up, but anyone under 21 will never even see one of my machines, because they're not allowed in. Yet, kids see these machines all over the place. Bowling alley, they go to Twins. I was at PJ's in Sycamore. It's three machines, there's two grandparents and three kids, and they're sitting right next to the machines. They know it's there. And I've a lot of, I've been to England and Scotland a lot, because I have family there, and gambling parlors all over the place in England and Scotland, and it actually teaches people to be responsible gamblers. It's not like these people are just running out and losing all their money. It teaches responsibility.
I have a question. Is it a full-serve liquor license, or is it beer and wine?
Beer and wine only, and also, I asked, I did an informal poll on, on a lot of the places around here, and they serve 20 beers a day. That's the average, that they told me. They said, we'll serve 20 beers a day. So, it's not a, people there aren't gonna be drinking left and right. And they can't, because I have alcohol training now, so I know the limits that they can have.
I have another question, if I may. Your employees, you said you will have 19, or how many?
Eight, approximately.
Eight? So, would they get a livable wage, or would it be more on the minimum wage side?
I'm doing what all the other gambling parlors around here are doing. It's minimum wage plus tips. And, and I tell the people upfront, and all the other ones know it, I'm looking for, like, a resident of DeKalb called me, inquiring about a job, and he's an artist. And I said, well, that's perfect, because you can do, I don't expect you to be working every, you know, every minute of every hour. I want you staying out of people's way. Ask them if they want a drink when they walk in, and then do your thing, you know? You can paint if you want, you know, just, and take care of the customers' needs, but they're not gonna be standing over them, talking to them, and watching them play, they're gonna be staying out of their way.
So, in your, in your model of what you hope the, the area to look like, you've got some open, are those just like a couple tables with a couple chairs, so people can come in and sit down and-
Exactly. I'll through wifi, and if somebody wants to come in, have a cup of coffee, and check their email, you know, maybe when they're picking up their kids, they're 20 minutes early, and they don't wanna, their usage on their cell phone's already up, and they wanna check their emails at my place, they're more than welcome to, as long as they're over 21.
Or they're there with somebody, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought so, I just wanted to double jump on that. If there's nothing else, I do ask one more time, if there's anyone from the public that has any further comments or questions, to feel free to go to the podium. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or comments? City, do you have any further?
I do not.
So, our recommendation that was given to us was to potentially, or consider continuing this until the 8th of, of August. Commissioners, what are your thoughts? Are you, do you need some more time? Do you want some more time? Are you prepared to make a motion, go forward?
I personally like to see the staff recommendation before we proceed.
Okay. Okay, great. So, we will not close the public hearing, it will be open for continuance until August 8th, if that's the motion that comes forward. And so, I'd be happy to take a motion, if there's no further questions or comments.
I'll move.
Okay.
I move the public hearing for a special use permit for a video gaming establishment at 850 to 852 South Fourth Street. Be continued to the August 8th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, to be held in the city council chambers at the DeKalb Municipal Building, 200 South Fourth Street, DeKalb, Illinois, at 6:00 PM.
Second.
So, motion's been made by Buckley, seconded by Wright. Roll call?
Yes.
Vicki Buckley?
Yes.
David Castro?
Deborah Neer?
Yes.
Jerry Wright?
Yes.
Chair Christina Doe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Reports from the city.
Next commission meeting is July 18th. We have two public hearings. I emailed those to you. We have one hearing for a hotel, for a rezoning for a hotel in South Annie Glinton in Knowles Avenue South, and also a public hearing for the building at Fifth Street and Lincoln Highway, where the subway and Marco's Pizza is. Dunkin' Donuts is proposing to go in the east end of the building, and they have proposed amendments regarding some wall signage from that special use approved a few years ago. And just checking attendance for the July 18th, I did get a feedback from most people. We do have a quorum for attending on July 18th, Castro, Doe, Buckley, and Barbie, so if I can hear from Jerry and Deb.
I can.
Okay.
I'll be out of town.
Let's make sure we have a quorum. Jerry's good on that. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. So, if nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
So moved by Barbie?
Second.
Seconded by Wright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Got you out in time.
All right. She's taken.